convene this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board. And also mention that we do have two members attending the electronic communication, Ms. Hummel and Ms. Young. One is in the country and one is not. Now have a member certify closed session for us.
Mr. Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
I don't think she's back yet.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Ms. Young is back. Do you want to pose the question to her?
Mrs. Young, to certify closed session.
Certifying closed session. Thank you.
Okay.
There she is.
Ms. Hummel.
Okay. You can move on to me.
Mrs. Hundley.
Aye.
And Mr. Dell.
Aye. And can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented this evening?
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers, Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Hundley.
Aye.
Sorry. Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel. And Mr. Dell.
Aye. Move on to our announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There is no such thing as a quiet summer for a school division. In addition to preparing for the incoming year, we're engaging nearly 1,000 students in instruction, creativity, and fun in summer learning. In addition to instruction focused on core academic skills, our students are engaging with programming provided by our partners from the Williamsburg Regional Library and the School Health Initiative Program. Our summer programs run through July 27th. Camp Imagine is a new opportunity this year thanks to a grant from the WJCC Schools Foundation. About 50 rising first and second grade students, many from traditionally underrepresented student groups, are participating in an eight-day camp, applying critical thinking skills to analyze, create, and problem solve in various topics. Finally, we are continuing to hire full and part-time staff in instructional and support positions for the 2023-24 school year. Any interested candidate is encouraged to join us for a job fair on Wednesday, July 26th, from 1:30 through 5:30 p.m. at James Blair Middle School. You will have an onsite interview. Job offers will be made on the spot to qualified candidates. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Any board member reports this evening? All right, we're going to move on to our public comment for the evening. Ms. Ordigo, turn it over to you.
Thank you. It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. It is the Board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked not to engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the Board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the Board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated one minute and 30 seconds to make their presentation, and the Board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My directions are concluded.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo.
First speaker is Brittany Shazier.
Hi. My name is Brittany Shazier, and I'm a resident Tuano. I'm speaking today in regards to the non-transportation school zones located within .5 to 1 mile of the school. I missed the other meetings, my apologies, but I hope my voice can still be heard. I am a widow and a mother of four children who will be attending Stonehouse Elementary this fall. The radius line used to determine transportation to my community goes directly through the woods at .4 miles, and the walk to school is over a mile and will be 25 minutes in length for my four children, which includes six-year-old triplets with asthma and allergy issues. In 2020, I was injured in a double gunshot wound to my head that slapped me with a traumatic brain injury and legally blind in the state of Virginia. Although I face much diversity and adversity, I have issues with light and sound, and I strive to be the best mother that I can be. I am unable to drive, and some days I may be unable to walk this long distance of 50 minutes twice a day. I suffer from neuropathy from my injury because I was right-side paralyzed, which can cause muscle weakness. I recently called transportation to ask what could be done in my situation where I cannot drive and some days will not be able to walk, and they said their hands were tied by the school board and that they can only do what they were told to do. So I'm here today asking what you are going to do for those parents who cannot drive and who cannot walk. They are disabled like me. What about the children who are forced to walk in unsafe conditions or will be soaking wet or frostbitten when they get to school? Since my blindness also includes a visual field impairment, it is clearly unsafe for me to walk my children to school every day. I may not see the car that is oncoming, and I may not see my child.
You can finish your sentence, ma'am.
Who has stepped out into the road or an attacker.
Thank you. Ms. Here.
Jill Piles.
Hi. Thank you to the teachers and staff. My minor child just graduated. Yay. I had a Ms. D, Mr. O, Coach L, Mr. and Mrs. E, Mr. W, and Mr. B. I could never homeschool chemistry. I homeschooled a couple of years ago, 2020, and we came back to the public school. And at graduation, the principal read, thankfully read, From Other Places She'll Go instead of Me and Earl and The Dying Girl, which has the 94 F-words, and oral sex that I complained about last year. So I'm hoping I don't quite understand the new complaint process, but I hope the community will work together. I don't know if the books, library books are unrestricted right now because video games, movies, airplane movies, YouTube, everybody asks, is this under appropriate for under 18? So it sounds like the Family Life Committee went well last year, so I hope that the community can get together and work together. I know there are library books and there's other things, transportation, cellphone, inappropriate use, but this is important also. I know you have four librarians that will be looking over the books, but I hope you'll include the community as well. After this, I'm going to go see that movie Sound of Freedom, and I think as a community, we need to come together and focus on the children and think, what would, what would you as a child want and be exposed to? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Piles.
That's it.
That was it? Okay. Thank you both for coming out and speaking to the school board. We'll move on to item six of our proposed agenda items, that review authorization of signatures in the absence of the superintendent. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Annually, the State Department of Education requests the Board authorize a member of our staff members, recommended by me, to sign off on official reports in my absence. And the recommendation this evening is to authorize Ms. Ewing, Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Daniel Kiefer, Deputy Superintendent, and Mr. Shawn Walker, Assistant Superintendent for School Leadership, to sign State Department documents in the absence, in my absence. This is an annual request that's brought for authorization to the Board.
Any questions for Dr. Heron on that? Okay, we'll move on to six-two, review tuition rates for non-resident students for a 23-24 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to hand right over to Ms. Ewing.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Annually, we bring the non-resident tuition rate for the upcoming school year to you for approval. The tuition rates are based on the adopted fiscal year '24 budget, and the calculation is based on the same methodology as used in prior years. The recommended tuition rate for the regular education is $12,978, which is an increase of $579 or 4.67% over fiscal year '23. And the special education tuition rate is recommended to be $22,602, which is an increase of $1,254 or 5.88% over fiscal year '23. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I apologize. Did you share how many non-resident students this might affect?
We had one student in fiscal year '23. I'm not sure if we've had any requests yet for the current school year.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Ewing? Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Six-three, review revisions to Policy J and Appendix A, student fee schedule for school year 23-24.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Worley's going to present this item this evening. Again, this is an annual change in fees that we bring to the school board for your consideration. Dr. Worley.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Heron. Each year, we update the Board on Appendix A of Policy J and student fees, fines, and charges. This is not a policy change. This is our annual update of the fee schedule, which is Appendix A connected with the policy. For the 23-24 school year, we do not have any additional fees to bring to the Board. As a reminder, though, driver's ed fees are set by the VDOE in September and will be communicated to students in class. We wanted to remind you that students are eligible for fee waivers, and courses with fees are noted in the program of studies. The online version of the program of studies has a direct link to the fee waiver form for students and families. The link will also be made available on school websites, and hard copies of the fee waiver form are available in school counseling offices as well as main offices. Additionally, families will know about the fee waiver opportunity through our family newsletter this fall and through their initial login with VIEW. Students and families will also have to acknowledge the fee waiver form before making a direct connection with VIEW as they log in. We also ask our teachers to remind students about the fee waiver options in class, as well as in their information in their syllabi with families. And we also give students direct access to the form in class if needed. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at this time.
I think you covered all the questions.
Tried to. That's the goal.
Well, we'll see. Any questions for Ms. Worley? Dr. Worley, excuse me. Thank you, Dr. Worley. Appreciate it. All right, we have a information discussion item around the feasibility, feasibility of solar energy use. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At the last board meeting, staff brought information regarding solar energy use and what there was a proposed agenda item. And at that point, due to Board's questions and really the newness of the topic, you rightly asked us to go back and bring more information to you as a Board before we move forward with another proposed item, if that's appropriate. So Mr. Kiefer's going to start, and then Mr. Snipes is going to take over and talk a little bit about feasibility of solar energy use at WJCC schools and facilities. Hopefully, this will address some of the questions from last time, but we anticipate if there's more, we'll certainly try to find the answers to those as well. Mr. Kiefer.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Board members. As Dr. Heron mentioned, we did want to follow up with the Board as a result of the June meeting, where we presented some initial information on solar for WJCC. And as you recall from that conversation, a bulk of the dialogue was really driven by Dominion Energy Solutions, which would be one of our thought partners along this journey. Wanted to share specifically why, as a division, we feel like pursuing solar power for WJCC is appropriate. First and foremost, it aligns with Goal Six of the strategic plan, Elevate Beyond Excellence, and it's designed to help us with organizational efficiency and effectiveness. We presented to you last time and still believe that there are operational cost savings with the idea of long-term price certainty around the electrical power that is a part of the solar piece. There's a sustainability and environmental impact, and as well the educational opportunities for students that exist with solar panels on the roofs of our buildings, buildings. You may wonder about solar power across the Commonwealth of Virginia, and as of right now, there are 154 of the 2015 schools that are solar-powered, but we know of others that are in the mix to be added. That's about 8% of the schools across the Commonwealth. It is an emerging, it is an emerging solution for many school divisions, whereby 65 schools have been added in the last two years. You may also be wondering about specific divisions that have moved towards solar, and we wanted you to have some examples of that. Middlesex County, their entire division is solar-powered in terms of schools. Of course, there are three schools within Middlesex County, which is why it was three exclamation point. Prince William has 12 schools. Flavanna, five. Virginia Beach currently has four, with at least four or five others in design to be added to the list. Palatin at four, Hanover at four, and Newport News at one. Mr. Snipes will take the presentation from here and address some of those specific questions that came forward. Marcelus?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Kiefer. In our previous presentation, the Board did voice concerns about the visibility and/or appearance of the solar array, as well as other questions that are addressed in the FAQ memo that is at your seats. On this slide, the picture on the top, the picture shows the arrow of the solar array at Ocean Lakes Elementary School in Virginia Beach, and the picture that's next to it shows the street view. And as you can see, the aerial, the solar array is not visible from the street. We also contacted the Virginia Beach Public Schools to ask some specific questions, questions such as, have you experienced any difficulties with installation, the system, or service? And the answer was been no. The solar company has been great to work with, and they hadn't experienced any issues. They also expressed that they've been experiencing savings thanks to the solar panels that were installed on the roof as part of their power purchase agreement, and that their agreement was for 25 years, similar to other school divisions within the state. They are currently paying about nine cent per kilowatt hour for their solar, similar to what we would be paying for our solar array. Here you'll see Gatewood Peep. It's just a preschool facility in Newport News, and as the previous slide shows, an aerial view and a street view. So as you can see, the solar arrays are not visible from the street. The power purchase agreement is just such that it's an arrangement with the solar company to install, operate, and repair the solar array when needed. The WJCC pays no upfront costs and bears no responsibility for maintenance. It simply purchases the system's electric output as it is generated. The PPA rates are determined by the cost of engineering, construction, and operation of the solar array. The more projects that are added to, built together, the less the construction costs, which in turn supports the lower PPA rates. And on a different slide, you will see what we have about 12 facilities that we are proposing or looking at putting solar arrays attached to. The PPA, again, can be shorter than 25 years, but the rate would need to increase or an upfront payment would be needed to maintain the existing proposed rate. Currently, we are paying, at some of our schools, we weren't able to calculate all of them right now, but for, on average, we're paying about 12 cent per square, per kilowatt hour. Under this new program, we would be paying close to nine cent per kilowatt hour. So we are saving per kilowatt hour. The phased implementation plan, we can, it doesn't have to be in this order. We can choose which order we propose to put these in. The initial discussion was for James River, James Blair, and Jamestown. All of them, they were, they were suitable for roof, when a roof replacement schedule, as well as it provided some savings in regards to construction cost.
Can I ask a question? Going back to that kilowatt per hour cost measure, 12 cents right on average?
On average.
Are these Jamestown, James Blair, James River, are they on the high end of that average?
That's what, that was the average for those three. We averaged those three today. They were 12 cent per hour, per kilowatt hour.
And if you go back to this slide, Mr. Dell, part of the reason that those three schools are in the first round is because we believe that we would experience the most savings by bringing those schools online first.
Right, okay.
Can I ask a question now?
Ms. Ordigo has a question.
Can I ask a question now? So I understand that you were talking about the fact that the roof, you know, is, because of the replacement schedule, these are the ones to start with. But it's a 25-year contract, and none of these roofs were put on this year. So it would inevitably, they would all be shorter than 25-year lifespan, right?
Correct. They do have an extended useful life, though. We, we use 30 years for metal roofs and 20 years for what we call TPO, a membrane, but those roofs can be extended to longer based on once you inspect them. Our, our replacement schedule is for 30 and 25, but that can change based on when we review the roof. For example, metal roofs can last for 50 years. They can. We changed them at 30. And, and TPO, which are membrane roofs, can last for 40, but we changed them at 25, just so they don't have, we get them early. Same things with our refurbishments and our schedule.
Good.
We'll let you continue. Thank you.
On this slide and the following slides, you will see three sites or school areas with the attached solar arrays. Again, the WJCC sites included in the proposal are either standing seam metal or membrane roof materials with a longer extended usable life than the length of the PPA. This is James Blair, and the next you will see is Jamestown. And what you see there are the offset, and the offset is the amount of energy produced by the solar array compared to the amount of energy that we've used historically during the last year. Those offsets can be determined by roof size, the number of solar arrays on the roof, your utility saving, your utility bills which you're currently experiencing, and construction cost of the solar array.
And the contract savings is over what?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years, okay.
Can I ask a?
For that school?
Yes, sir.
Each, for each school.
So this means that we, we would produce 46.5% of the energy that we use in any given year?
That's the projection.
Every year, not over the, over the life of the contract.
It is annually, you are offsetting that much of your energy cost.
Can I ask a question? Whatever.
Go ahead, Ms. Hummel.
So the savings, I'm just looking at James River, and you divide that by 25 years, and then divide it by 12 months. So you've got about $1,500 a month in savings for James Blair, toward James River. Is that, is that kind of the correct math that we're looking at? $1,500 a month savings for just that school?
I think that's accurate, Ms. Hummel. So if you go back earlier in the presentation, there's a, I think it might be slide five or six, the estimated annual first-year savings for James River are somewhere in the neighborhood of about $13,000. So your, your math is pretty close.
And then my question is, when I look at the, because I've got the, I'm looking at these lines here, the regional examples of Ocean Lakes and Gatewood, and then you look at the front street view, both of those schools are flat roof constructions. So in James River, when I look at, at slide nine, it's, it's not, right? I mean, it's, it's a, not a flat roof. And so are those, are those panels going to be visible to people on the ground?
I think they will be visible. However, they are, they are a color that is black that blends in with the roof's color as well.
So you're, you're saying you're going to example of an array that is blue for the purpose of the slide, and you're also, I think if we did a visual of James River from the front, it's a, it's a slope on one side and a slope on the other. So my sense is, and we can check this to be sure, is that that's a, that's a backward slope versus a frontward slope, if that makes sense, Ms. Hummel?
Yeah.
That's what I was, I was just trying to make sense of the blue and where, you know, I'm assuming.
The blue is really for illustrative purposes, so that if, if we may, if Dominion or we made the, the solar arrays black, it's going to blend into the, the vision of the current roof line. Whereas, so as an example, maybe, let me look at, so James, there's another example. So James Blair's roof is generally white, metallic. This is showing that it's blue, but in fact, the solar panels are, are black panels.
And, and James Blair's totally flat roof, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. So then, yeah, the flat roofs don't bother me at all, because I mean, like from the street, you can't see any of these panels. I'm more concerned with the schools that have the slopes that aren't flat. That's all. Just a visual, what's it going to look like. So you're telling me, Mr. Snipes, that from the street, you won't be able to tell that there are solar channels on James River unless they're installed?
I can't say you won't be able to tell, but it won't be as obvious as there would be a blue or a metallic solar array. I can get you pictures of a solar array where their, the solar arrays are black, and we can show you what it would look like. But yeah, I can't say you won't be able to tell, but it won't be as obvious.
We can certainly look at some front view pictures of the building to give you a sense of the elevation. Our, yeah, our goal would, would not be necessarily to create any aesthetic hangups as we're going through this. So we will look at that and can get you a picture of a, a front view of the building.
And when you look at Jamestown on slide 11, the interior porch, are those slopes down?
Yes. Yes.
If you look at 11, slide 11.
Yes, ma'am. They're, they're sloped.
The solid blue on the gray roof, are those slopes?
Yes.
Or pitched, pitched roofs, once again, are?
Can you hear Mr. Snipes's response?
Yes, ma'am. They are, they are sloped roofs to the, downward and to the front of the school and to the back, to the courtyard. Yes, ma'am, they are, they are sloped roofs to the uh downward and to the front of the school and to the back, to the courtyard.
So in in the Jamestown example, the the slope, I think I'm pointing at it right here, so maybe with the the red pointer, I'm not sure if you can see that, Ms. Hummel or not, through the screen. That is the, that's the bus loop area, is that not right? Is that that correct? So it's sloping towards the bus loop, so in this case, in all likelihood, you would be able to tell that there are solar panels on that part of the building. I think that's a fair assessment. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just it it, I just wanna make the point that we've gotta balance the aesthetics of our schools. We spent, we are known for having beautiful buildings, beautifully maintained view with buildings and just wanna be careful about um about affecting the aesthetics of some of our buildings, that's all.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, um so uh cause see, I I noticed that the examples of schools that have already got, they all had flat roofs. So I I I I understand what um Mrs. Hummel's saying and and um I'm thinking that it still could be aesthetically attractive even if it's in the front slope, but I'd like to see, I'd like to see a pic, you know, just an example.
Absolutely.
Ms. Donner?
Uh for Jamestown High School, if I remember correctly, there isn't any residential that's looking out onto it. So even if it's sloping towards the bus loop, it's not, it's not in anybody's line of sight that they're particularly paying attention to.
Thank you.
And then the ones in the, and it looks like also for James River, it's all sloping to the to up towards a parking lot and towards the interior. So again, even if you could see them, it's not um to the front of the school.
The other scenario to consider as we are thinking about solar arrays is the the way to maximize the offset is to provide maximum exposure to the sun. So so part of our challenge in thinking about this as an organization is that in order to capture the savings, you you do wanna provide max sun coverage uh and balance the aesthetics. So what what Mr. Snipes and I will do is to get some slant roof examples of what that looks like with the with a black solar panel on a dark uh ta- a do- a dark roof, if that will help in terms of the vision.
Thank you, Mr. Keever. Ms. Huntley?
Just for point of information, I am going home to Fluvana County this Saturday. And since there are five schools there, I'll just take pictures and send them to the board members. I don't know if they're flat roofs or sloped roofs, but since I'm going home and you have five, I'll just take pictures.
That would be great.
Fantastic, thank you.
All right, Mr. Snipes? Does it, any other questions for Mr. Snipes? He covered a lot more than the position of the uh the potential solar panels. Any other questions, Ms. Ordigo?
Can can you just go over again how Dominion Energy or the the subsidiary, how they make money off of this? Or why this is in their interest to install it for free?
We are, we are purchasing the power, they're gonna, they're gonna take some of the power that we're generating from the roof and sell it to others. So they th- they're harnessing the power as well, put back into the grid. I think is the the easiest way to explain that.
Um of the sixty-five schools or that was schools, right, not just divisions, sixty-five schools?
Sixty-five schools.
Schools, um were they all um engaged with Dominion Energy?
No, sir.
No.
Some of them are engaged with other solar companies. Dominion has had contracts and worked with different vendors installations throughout the Commonwealth. And we are in discussion. And we are, and we're in discussions with some of those as well.
That was gonna be my next question, okay.
To get a, see, we're getting a fair estimate.
Okay, thank you. All right, Ms. Donner?
I just wanna understand slide thirteen with the, how to understand the roofing schedule, that chart of roof installation, CIP, installation warranty and end of useful life.
Am I on the right slide?
It it's it's after the questions, I put it there, it was it was as a backup.
As a placeholder?
A placeholder to have discussion.
Okay.
Um so this, this was a slide that I use to determine when the solar installation may occur and based on when the warranty would be and the extended useful life. So as you can see, the roof installation at James River occurred in twenty seventeen, it's in our CIP for twenty thirty-seven, but it has an extended useful life for twenty forty-seven. So if we installed it in twenty twenty-four, we would be, or we could, we could be fairly sure that it would have lasted twenty forty-nine. So those those are our, I was looking at the roof schedules and the installation. After talking with the solar company, they decide, they said that they could install all twelve if we needed to in one summer. Um to which would, is a, which is a daunting task, but I don't know if we could do that to kinda match, to maximize our roof schedule.
Do we know about um um ground interruption and interruption between our plats? Um and I guess neighboring neighbors, that is, scars cabling and ha- have.
We have, I've not asked that question.
Okay. So would it require agreements between neighbors or with the county or city?
It 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 would require us to lease space on our roof for one dollar, but that is not with the county, that is with the schools. That is with the school board to rel- to rent that space for a dollar to them.
But I believe there will be some some zoning requirements as a part of the process, so not dissimilar to the cell tower conversation. There there are next steps to this, so if we decide we wish to move forward and we wanna move forward with the with this particular entity, their next steps are, we're gonna put a implementation plan in place and we're gonna start working on those three schools to include the appropriate zoning ordinances, construction permits and those kinds of things. So that that was kinda to your question?
Yes, sir.
Right, so it, wh- while they may say they can do twelve in a year, we believe that it would be more prudent to spread that out over the course of a a few years so that we get it done correctly and that we are all on the same page in terms of next steps.
Thank you.
Plus, all of our roofs will become ready for replacement at the same time. So we're we're looking at the schedule of roof replacement to determine who comes first. Probably what we need from from the board is just some sense of your level of comfort with us moving forward with the exploration with the intention of sometime fairly soon coming back with a proposed agenda item for your consideration.
Go ahead, Ms. Hummel.
So when I, and maybe, I'm sorry, maybe you guys said it, I just didn't, I didn't hear it. Um on like slide number thirteen, for example, when you're looking at a twenty-five year contract, I'm looking at the four hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred for James River. Are we, is that amount gonna be in our CIP or not? I mean, like are we paying out four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to get the thirteen thousand dollars in first year savings?
No, ma'am, I I think what what you would experience, what we would experience is a savings of energy costs as a part of the the operating budget.
So that four sixty-six eight hundred is not the money that the school system is spending?
That that is the amount of savings that we're expecting over twenty-five years.
Projected savings, that's correct.
Savings not spending.
Correct.
Thank you.
So Mrs. Hummel, there is no upfront cost to this, to the school division at all?
So the question, the question to the board is, is this a a direction um that we would like to see the division take? Installing solar panels on a number of our schools uh for the benefit of seeing these savings over a period of years. Can I start with those that are virtual? Ms. Young? Ms. Young, are you there?
I'm here.
Did you hear the question?
Uh about the solar panels?
So the the superintendent would like, okay, the superintendent would like to get a sense of uh the board's leaning, whether the board is uh willing to continue to engage in these conversations. Uh see the feasibility of this taking place on a number of our schools over a few years with the cost savings that's been attributed to the process. Is that something that you'd like to see?
I I'm um very much in favor of doing this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hummel.
I'm in favor as long as I can be assured that that the aesthetics have been at least considered and addressed as much as possible.
Okay, I I think we've heard that. Yeah, Ms. Ordigo?
Yeah, I'm I'm okay with.
Ms. Huntley shaking her head. Ms. Donner? Great. Dr. Beers?
Uh yeah, I'm I'm just that one, uh the the only question I I I wanted to see something on a picture just to see what it looked like.
Yeah.
Okay, no, I um I fully support that.
Uh for my part, I've been looking forward to this conversation since uh January of twenty twenty. I think uh it's uh long overdue and I think the numbers support it, um but there's a lot of work ahead. And I think we've got the team to to make sure it gets done correctly too, so thank you. We'd like to see more.
So next steps, we'll provide some pictures to of what it would look like on the roofs that are not flat. If there's concerns, we can certainly look at another school with a flat roof, potentially. Although there, we don't, we don't have as many as flat roofs.
Right, and I and I think that we would have to have some internal discussion about reaching a certain level of savings, so definitely consider the aesthetics, but at what, to what degree do you say aesthetics outweigh a savings or the environmental piece? So I I think that we'll, we can try to get some pictures together and further engage in that dialogue. The reason these buildings were selected was based on the timing, was based on their energy usage and to the projection is these are the best places for us to go.
Thank you, Mr. Keever. And Mr. Snipes, I appreciate it. Move on to uh.
Yeah, can I just add that?
Sure, Dr. Beers.
Oh, should you say one thing? Cause I I continue to support this. But, oh, sorry, but I know that s- some of the other, Middlesex is a good example. They they have um stacks of um uh polar sandals along, on the ground, along the side. Um and they assure everybody that it's okay and it's safe and but they all don't end up on the roof. And I'm I'm glad that all of, all of ours are gonna be on the roof.
We we are too, we 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 don't necessarily feel like there's space on the ground for that to occur.
Thank you. Thank you both. All right, mo- on the policies, we've got a more than a handful to go through here, but we do wanna be uh methodical and considerate of each policy here, beginning with item eight-one, policy DA, management of funds.
Yes, sir, I'm I'm pleased to be with you tonight to present policies on behalf of administration and the policy committee. I don't know if it's, you know, the policy committee is uh joining us virtually, so I hope that as questions come forward, they'll definitely weigh in uh for us.
I see what you did.
Yeah, I see how that worked out. The first one we have is DA, uh management of school funds, uh this particular policy. We are suggesting to move forward the school board's role from the currently at the end of the policy to the beginning of the policy, so we're moving it up from lines twenty-five to twenty-six to lines six through seven. Uh there are a couple other minor word changes, word changes, and we've added DAR as a cross-reference.
We're gonna take uh a a pause after the explanation from Mr. Keever and to just scan the room for questions or other considerations, and then we'll move forward if there aren't any. Mr. Keever, we'll move on to eight-two.
Thank you, and I, just as a as a point of reference, when I'm reviewing them with you, I'm actually using the the red line numbered version, because that way we can talk about the numbers if you've got a question. So that that's in board docs for you as well. Yes, sir, thank you. Uh DB is fiscal management, it's the annual budget. The policy is updated to reflect a change or amendment to Virginia code by way of a House bill and a Senate bill. That code change uh sh- shifted the number of days in advance, or shifted the days from ten to seven in terms of publishing, um then publishing the public hearing relative to the budget.
Thank you, sir.
DGC, this particular policy, uh we've removed the word cafeteria from line seven because cafeteria funds are not depository and did not deposited in student activity funds. We added vending machine proceeds that are not deposited in the school nutrition program in line seven and eight. There were some other, um there's just a a minor change on line fifteen. Based on committee conversation, we removed the word duly from line nineteen because our opinion is that if you're a qualified accountant, you are duly, so we're not sure that duly qualified is necessary per the per the committee. Uh updated lines twenty-four and twenty-five in terms of authorizing the superintendent to promulgate regulations. Uh as a point of reference, the the current regulation is being revised, that's also included in your board docs packet, but the current regulation is being revised into two main components. All of the information contained in the the um former regulation is outlined in our management of funds manual, and that information is being updated as well.
Thank you, sir.
D, yeah, DI, uh fiscal management. Well, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong thing, my apologies. Uh DI, fiscal accounting and reporting. Uh there were some changes, replaced his and her with superintendents. Were reworded the first sentence to be more succinct, change things like will receive to receives and will submit to submits. Additionally, there was um the idea of the school level accounting system was removed from lines twenty-five through thirty-six as this this information is contained in policy DGC, as well as DG GCR, which is the Student Activity Fund Manual, which I just referenced. Uh we added a line about promulgating regulations. The regulation is being revised to reflect current business practices.
My eight-five?
Yes, sir. DN, disposal of surplus items, added informal and to the repub- to the public in line eight. Added lines twenty-six and twenty-seven in terms of the promulgating regulations, updated some cross references as well.
Okay, item eight-six, policy EB?
Yes, sir, school crisis and emergency management plans. The shift in this one was adding the term medical response in the title and updating uh some of the cross references.
And adding medical response was due to?
The fact that we felt like it is, it was necessary, medical response was necessary and it's in alignment with the VSBA policy. I might also add that as a school division, we are looking very closely at, and I I believe I've referred to this before, the standard response protocol. The standard response protocol is something that the Department of Criminal Justice Services, DCJS, has adopted as a statewide response to emergency events. That protocol has some specific language with respect to how you handle something that goes on in a school. I'll just use a quick example, oftentimes we talk about lockdowns in schools and it's a, it's a soft lockdown or a hard lockdown or an internal lockdown or an external lockdown. The variance of language can get confusing at the school level, be confusing for parents, students, staff. As we work to better understand the standard response protocol, there is the the occasion to add a regulation to this particular policy, which would become EBR, to lay out what those responses are. And I think it would be helpful for us uh as administration to share with the board some information around the standard response protocol. So anticipate that as a, as a next step as we're getting into to back to school mode.
Would be great, thank you.
The next one is safety issues and reporting of hazards, EBAA. Uh this has been formatted for consistency with some other policies, changing his and her to the superintendents and revising language uh to to better align with VSBA.
Eight-eight, uh policy EC?
Yes, sir, building grounds, uh management and maintenance. Yes, sir. Building grounds, uh, management and maintenance. We are not, I need to turn, we are, hold on now, excuse me. We've made one spelling change or one capitalization change and updated some cross-references here.
Eight nine, policy ECA?
ECA, inventory and reporting of loss or damage, uh, forma- formatting to be more consistent with other policies, um, and cross-references updated.
Eight ten, uh, EEA?
Again, formatted to be consistent with other policies, added in or superintendent says igny, uh, and are updating cross-references based on V S B A recommendations in the model policy.
Can you say whether or not the additional cross-reference policies, the green lines, are those new policies to us that weren't there when it was last revised? I'm just, just as a curiosity?
No, sir. They're, they're not new policies, but there might be potentially language in said policies that are now indicative of transportation and/or the idea really that students can be suspended from using school transportation. So, it, it could have been previously that J F C should have been a referenced policy. But now, as we're going through it, we, we are bringing it forward to you and saying it, it definitely should be listed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, eight eleven, EEAB?
Yes, sir. School bus scheduling and routing. Uh, this particular policy, um, is an opportunity for us to in policy, uh, indicate that we are potentially establishing non-transportation zones within an individual school zone. It lays out the criteria for that non-transportation zone. Talking about at the elementary school, not exceeding a half-mile radius from the school and at the secondary school, not exceeding a one-mile radius. The policy also goes on to detail that there is a corresponding regulation that goes with the policy, which is EEABR that delineates, um, some of the pieces, many of the pieces that are reviewed with respect to non-transportation zones or where stops are placed, et cetera.
Ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I was curious about that. If a student cannot walk or, uh, or a parent cannot drive, um, what accommodations do we have for them?
Well, one of the things that I think it, it's important for us to be really clear about when we talk about non-transportation zones is that the division is not suggesting that students walk. What the division is saying is that a particular zone is designated that it's a parent transportation piece. Similar to when there are concerns about, uh, bus stop placement or, um, I'll use bus stop placement. Parents are always encouraged to be in touch with transportation or that child's school to talk about. What are the alternatives that, that we can look at as a family within transportation or within the school to meet their needs? That, that happens now. There, there are calls that will take place in August and September into the fall from parents with concerns about where a stop is placed. That stop is then re-vetted. Sometimes there's a change made. Other times, there's not a change made. Even going back to last year, as we, uh, began to shift very, in a very small way, the amount of distance from a student's home to the stop, we made that a little bit longer because we felt like that could help us become more efficient. There were parents that shared with us in August frustration around that. Um, and many of us went and visited where those homes were in relation to the stops to make a determination whether or not we needed to revisit it or whether or not we were comfortable with it.
But I'm just curious about the situation that came up in public comment.
Dr. Beers, your mic.
Sorry. Uh, I'm, I'm just curious about, uh, Kate, you know, the, the situation that came up in, uh, public comment. And that's exactly what I was, you know, it's like, parent can't drive, can't, can't get the student to the, to the bus stop. And the, the student is unable to walk to the bus stop.
Sure.
My assumption is we'd figure out a way to accommodate that.
Well, I, I would tell you that we, we will work with parents to, to address concerns. Sometimes within that conversation, and I, sometimes the answer is a no, or sometimes the answer is not what someone is interested in hearing. I, I think we ought to look at every instance that comes forward and make a good decision on behalf of that student and that family.
Okay, so, not to, not to, go ahead, Ms. Hummel. Go ahead, Ms. Hummel, yes.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Um, this is more semantics on line, um, twenty, where you say the maximum travel distance to bus stops for children eligible for transportation, A, colon, and then you have A, elementary schools, B, secondary schools. Should we replace the may with for instead of may? Like, children eligible for transportation for, colon, elementary schools, dash, may not exceed, and then secondary schools may not exceed. It's just semantics.
I agree.
I have the same observation, and I was gonna recommend just transportation, colon, but four is fine too.
Or whatever. I, it's just, it's the may and then having to go right into elementary schools just doesn't sound right to me.
We may have mistakenly, pardon the pun, but we, uh, I think we eliminated the word B, uh, mistakenly.
Even then, even then, it still is awkward.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make a revision there.
Thank you.
I think Ms. Ortega had a question.
So, Ms. Ortega?
You mentioned that sometimes parents, you know, ha- what happens already is that they call the school and try to work out alternative situations. What are examples of the alternative situations for transportation?
Alternatives in terms of a non-transportation zone or alternatives in terms of a stop concern?
Whatever you were referencing earlier.
Sure. In, in some cases, we may n- need to adjust a stop based on where that stop occurs within a neighborhood or along a road. Uh, we have placed a stop and feel like that's an appropriate place to put the stop, but upon further review with respect to the number of students that are going there or the, the curvature or the traffic, we may need to, to reverse course on a decision and look at it more carefully or closely. With, without getting into specifics of things discussed tonight or other people bringing forward concerns, I, I think we pledge to work with each individual family on their concern and do the best we can to reach a decision that's in the best interest of the student and also meets within the parameters of, of attempting to provide efficient transportation for all.
Okay, and then just one more question, just for, for reference. What, what are the, um, distance, um, parameters for bus stops now? So, wh- how do we determine how, how far you live from a bus stop versus, you know, what are the?
Right now, it's, it's a half-mile and a mile.
Okay, so, so you could have a bus stop and still be walking a half-mile for elementary kids or a mile to a bus stop versus from a house to a school?
You could. It, it doesn't, it, one of the data points that we shared last year is that we are particularly generous with respect to our walk-to-stop distances, which is why last year when we began to, uh, create more of a distance, I think we heard from some folks that were concerned about having to walk further to the bus stop. So, w- we are permitted to go, based on the policy, point five and one. I can tell you that we're, we're far better than that as an organization.
Okay.
I'm not sure if that's help. I, I, I'm trying to give you the-
No, I was just trying to say, rel- you know, if someone's concern is, you know, my, my little kindergartner would have to walk a half-mile to school because now we're in a non-transportation zone, but maybe there are little kindergartners that are already walking a half-mile to the designated bus stop and, and perhaps that's the same distance.
That's not impossible. Right, that, that's, that's a possibility. I, I think that we generally beat the point five in terms of our accommodation of particular stops in, in neighborhoods, et cetera.
A non-transportation zone distance would, would typically exceed most people's bus stop distance.
I would say on average, that's correct.
Ms. Donner?
Mr. Keever, I think I heard you say earlier that a non-transportation zone is not a walking zone. It is a transportation from A to B. So, it's a parent choice whether their kindergartner walks a half-mile, which they're not doing, or they drive them to that bus stop.
Ms. Donner, that's exactly right. I, I, I try to say that as often as possible. I think a lot of times people perceive non-transportation as the division saying walking, but that's not what we're saying. I've got some personal experience myself in terms of living within a non-transportation zone in the place where I reside. I'm not comfortable with my child making, at least I wasn't comfortable with my child making that walk to school. So, we had to figure out how to make that happen as a, as a family or with, with friends to, kind of on a daily basis in, in order to, to have that occur. So, we're not suggesting walking. We're saying you live in a place that we're not currently going to provide transportation.
So, parents can choose car pools, they can choose driving, they can choose a bunch of different options. It's not, we are telling children to walk.
That is correct. And I will say that we also are look, in those cases where people feel like they, they must make the decision to walk, we're also looking at, is that a potential feasible thing for a student to do?
Thank you.
Now, this policy is not about, i- it's not the N T Z conversation, right? It's about identifying what's already in place, right? Articulating what's already in place as far as the elementary schools and secondary schools.
Well, I, I would con- well, I would say that we are adding specific language to this or w- w- we didn't necessarily have language that said that there could be an establishment of non-transportation zones. We, we established non-transportation zones in conversation with the board last year. When we brought this policy forward for review, we felt like it would be important for us to put that in policy.
clarify it, sure.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Questions or, or comments around this policy? You feel good about it? Okay, we'll move on, sir, to item eight twelve, E E A C.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we are recommending no changes. We, we, we would not mark this as a reviewed policy.
Thank you. Um, any concerns about that, any, as the board's reviewed, E E A C? All right, eight thirteen, policy EF, food service management?
Content-wise, no changes recommended. We are recommending a cross-reference revision.
Eight fourteen, policy K J E.
This particular policy was adopted in November of two thousand and two. Uh, we've, we've done due diligence with respect to this policy. There, there is not a corresponding V S B A policy. Our neighboring school divisions do not have a similar policy. We've talked with our attorney. We feel like we can recommend retiring this policy.
Retirement of K M F?
Similarly, uh, it was adopted in nineteen seventy-four. Uh, there is not a V S B A model policy for K M F.
I apologize, I apologize. I got ahead of myself. I was looking at the board.
Okay.
Making sure that we understood we were talking about retirement and I got to K M F. I meant K J E. My mistake there.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, then we can continue.
Well-
Go ahead, Ms. Ortega, sorry.
Yeah, I just, I, I have a question. I don't know that it's well-formulated, but just why, why would we not want to, I'm misreading it, you know, quickly, but engage community agencies or service providers that, for needed programs? Why would we retire that? It's not saying we have to, but why would we, why would we exclude that from something that is a possibility?
I think that's a, a fair question. I think that it is, uh, w- w- we accommodate that work with other community organizations and entities out, outside of the policy or within other policies. It, to me, it's also similar to the reason that we're recommending K M F, uh, be retired. Uh, we feel like there are other active policies that, that cover that relational piece. I'll let Ms. Wall, um, if I'm misinterpreting what we've talked about.
No, that's exactly right. And actually, K M F does allude to some of the other policies that might cover some of the, um, partnerships that you're suggesting. L A, relations with colleges and universities. L B, with private schools. K G, use of school facilities. K F, distribution of information and materials, and K K A, volunteers and partners. All we thought covered some of the things that are referenced in both K J E and K M F, so we felt that there was a redundancy there. Couple, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm saying, wh- where is that list that you just read from?
I'm sorry, and that's connected with the next policy on the agenda, K M F.
I've got K M F redlined up and I don't see those cross-references.
Yeah, I don't see that either.
If you look at the-
I'm J H D straight now.
If, if you'll look at the, what we call the green sheet, which is the policy note page that we try to provide, sort of an overview.
Okay.
If you look at the K M F, uh, green page, it talks about where there are specific partnership policies that are currently in place.
Okay.
So, is, okay, are we retiring K M F too?
We are suggesting that both be eligible for retirement.
Oh, it would be probably good in the future to have listed those on the green sheet as well for K J E.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so the retirement of ei- either or both of these policies would not prevent an outside organization that wanted to help, say, with, you know, attendance issues or counseling or, I don't, I'm making this up. That would not prevent people, us from partnering with them?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
And we have policy avenues to direct that if needed be. Okay. All right, and I think we've dealt with K M F then, as far as a retirement. Okay, move on to eight sixteen, policy I I B D.
Yes, sir. Uh, I I B D is about, uh, school libraries and media centers. We are recommending some, um, some language change here. Removal of media center and media specialist to terms that match our current recommendation or match the current recommendation from the American Association of School Librarians. Titles for particular positions change over time. There was at one point, uh, a heavy emphasis on calling somebody, uh, um, a, a library media specialist. Is it a school library? Is it a library media center? We are recommending that it go back to school libraries, um, and stri- striking the media centerpiece, similar with the library media professionals and going with school librarians. Beyond that, we've also recommended that, uh, providing a unified program of information services versus media services would be appropriate as well. Uh, if you look at, uh, kind of lines thirteen through twenty-four, there were edits recommended by our librarians who felt that the, the focus on heritage was, um, potentially narrower than, than they were interested. Uh, similarly, and I would kind of refer back to Ms. Hummel and Ms. Young, we had some conversation with respect to item number two, lines sixteen through twenty, in terms of how to word that relative to the collection and the diverse viewpoints.
Ms. Hummel, Ms. Young, would you either like to speak to that, item two?
Well, well, first of all, it was struck originally, and I don't think we should be removing those from, um, from the, it, it was covered in, you know, words, the diverse heritage backgrounds. But I think it needs to include those others because I don't want to remove those from, um, from our policies because I think they're important to continue to include them. So, that was my, my statement about it.
And by the others remaining, are you speaking of American heritage? What are you speaking of?
I'm on line two.
Yep.
I thought that's what we were talking about, line two. It talks about the diverse heritage. Uh, it, it originally stated, and Mr. Keever can correct me if I'm wrong, where it says library resources will represent a wide range of used representative diverse heritage and perspectives of the school and community. And removing the words religious, ethnic, and cultural groups. And I think it's important that that's identified with diverse heritage means. And that's what I'm referring to. Is that, is that what you're discussing? I'm sorry, there's a terrible thunderstorm here and I'm not hearing everything you're saying, so.
That's what we're talking about, 'cause I, I'm looking at the red line version, which I would have thought the green portions were inclusions, additions? Am I considering that wrong?
No, they are.
Okay.
I think what was, I think in our discussion- I think what was, I think in our discussion that it was. It was. To say just American heritage was too narrow because it's talking about. A lot more than just American heritage. It's not to say that. There's not range of views pertaining to American heritage, but just there will be a range of views representative of, of. Heritage go beyond American heritage. I I don't think it wa- it was designed to be more broad than. Narrow narrowly just hitting on American heritage. That was my takeaway.
For example, in our schools, we teach world history?
Uh, yes, world history, yeah, like, wh- what I, that was my remembrance of this, and I don't know whether. Mr. Keever, you can add anything, but it wasn't. It wasn't anything negative about like, oh, let's strike American heritage. There wasn't any negative, in my mind, something about, oh. We don't wanna have American heritage anymore. It was more like, there's. A lot more in the world, and it's not to take away from American heritage, it's just to add. Just to say probably what's, what is really truly reflective of our libraries, that they're very broad.
Okay, I think Ms. Young wanted to say something, and then Miss Ortega.
I, I don't agree with this best, but I don't remember discussing it hugely about American heritage. I don't remember. Us having a co- a real conversation about it. I'm not opposed to leaving it in there.
Yeah, I I'm not opposed to leaving it in there either, honestly. I'm not. I just think in my memory, we were just talking about broadening the, the range of views. From the original thing, which was representative of the religious, ethnic, cultural groups and their contributions to American heritage. Because they, there's a lot of. There's a lot of diverse heritage that's beyond American heritage, that's all.
I hear you, and I think that, that is the perspective that we discussed, and and the reason that the wording is laid out as, as it's laid out now. Not to potentially eliminate a segment, but to be, um. More inclusive.
This is, yeah, and I'm totally okay with like, keeping some verbiage in there about American heritage, you know, like. Keeping it in there, it's, it, I'm fine with that.
Can I, can I?
Miss Ortega.
So, so the way I s- see this is that there are two, it's almost two different things, and we don't have to belabor this, 'cause I think, I think diverse heritage. Covers it, but in my mind, for American students, there, there are two different categories almost. There's, there's diverse heritage from many different people, from many different places, that does converge into the American heritage. That's one category. And then separately, there's also diverse heritage throughout the world that you should also learn about. So I don't think that those two things have to conflict. D- does that make sense?
I agree, I agree.
And, and I do think that as, as American students, that is somewhat unique to our country, that we do have this convergence of many cultures and religions and. And ethnic backgrounds and every, everything included, that, that comes together into an American heritage. And in addition to that, there are many other heritages that are important to learn about, so that's how I see that.
And with that said. If that's accurate, it makes sense to leave the new and the previous together to work in harmony.
Yeah, I'm not against me.
Ms. Donner, I'm sorry, I was, I was still reading, go ahead.
Uh, I disagree, in that there, the way that it reads, if you were to keep it in, it says. Um, representing of the diverse heritage, including blah blah, and their contributions to American heritage, and so it is. It is narrowing that it is, it is you as your, it is all in relation to the US. And I think by striking it and having it just be broad, because you could have, you could have a book on, you know. Nigerian contributions to British history, right? There's all sorts of things, and if we're talking about a policy of what is in the library. By saying, well, now all of the books, if they're going to talk about something, it's always in relation to American history, like, that's not. Or it, or countries which Americans, that's not what's actually in the library. We've got science books, we've got a whole bunch of other things, so I think just. Striking that and just keeping it broad of, like, our books are representing all these different views, and it is in the community. And just independent learners and just leaving it broad. I think once you start doing that, then you're going to then invite. What's the long list of, there's so many different heritage that you would start to need to put in to be inclusive.
So, if I've heard you right, would you agree then that? The diverse heritage backgrounds, including religious, ethnic, and cultural groups, continuing to strike and their contributions, and then just having just American heritage? As a study, as a study group?
No, I like it the way it's written.
Okay.
I just have one follow-up question then, because we're not, so that this, the words that are stricken, the, the, the red line through American heritage is then replaced with. And perspectives of the school. How is that defined?
I think it's and perspectives of this, so.
The school, I know, and greater community, but I understand greater community, but then the perspectives of the school, though.
So then, so take out and perspectives of the greater community. I mean, I think when I read, when I read in perspective of the school, I read it as students within the school, but. Just library resource will pre- representative, wide range of views, representative of the diverse heritage backgrounds, including religious, ethnic, and cultural groups. And perspectives of the greater community, and will enable students to blah blah blah.
I, I, so I actually agree for the purposes of this policy and the wording with, with pushing everything into the contributions to American heritage only. I agree that that is limiting. I just meant as a broader, as a broader concept. There's, there is value in learning how different cultures and backgrounds have created an American heritage and expanding beyond that. That's all. I don't know that we have to co- express that in this policy, but I just wanted, that's what I was saying.
One of the pieces that I, I believe that as, 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 uh, Ms. Barr worked with the, the librarians team on this is that. That part of, e- each of our schools has a, has a unique. Has a unique group of students within the school, and so the idea of the perspectives of the school and greater community. Were designed to be inclusive of that particular school, which is why. That's, that's the way it was recommended wording. The, the conversation with the committee was really around. Should we or should we not include religious, ethnic, and cultural groups? Should, should that be called out? So, part of what Ms. Young was referring to was in that earlier. Red line version, that different words might have been pulled out, but where the committee landed was feeling comfortable with the language as presented in number two. To be as inclusive of as possible, but also referring to religious, ethnic, and cultural groups.
Dr. Beers?
I guess I, I don't know exactly where. Or again, I, I, I guess I'm ask, the question I'm asking is, why are we talking about this book or this series?
We're not. This is a policy.
No, oh, but, I mean, there is, um, did this get raised? Is this, how, how, how are this?
Yeah, so we're looking at policy IIBD.
Right, no, I know the policy.
Yep.
Question, I, we're spending all this time talking about.
Which is required. We're not talking about any book. No book has been mentioned.
So, we're just talking about the concept of American heritage?
Yes, sir.
Cause there's a series called American Heritage.
Oh, no, not that.
No, okay.
It's a US history book. It was my, it was my eighth history book in nineteen eighty-eight.
Well, and the other thing, you know, I, I, and I heard about the, you know, the, the community and. But the other part of that is, um, we want people to read Marx. It's important to know historically how some of that stuff came about, and if you said, oh, no, we can't have Marx in there, God, we'll all, they'll all turn into communists. It, so, yeah, I, I. I guess I have a pretty low bar, but I, I, that's what I started to, you know, and I'm, and I, I apologize if I. Totally misunderstood that, but I, um. I understand about the community, and I understand, but we don't have, you know, or any of those other. Uh, controversial, uh, historic figures that, that have led to some, you know, really horrible things, and. And I know, uh, uh, people try to ban, you know, they've tried to ban Anne Frank. Yeah, they have. And so I, I, um, so I, yeah, I just, I wanted to make sure I understood. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the policy. I just didn't know where that, cause I didn't see American heritage in the policy. I don't know where that came from.
Let me go around and ask, uh, our, Ms. Hummel, do you have a comment? I saw your hand.
Yeah, I just, I, I mean, I'm not, like I said, averse to having, having something mentioned about American heritage. I just don't know whether it belongs in that section too. Maybe it'll only be, it could be an additional fifth bullet point or something about, you know. We would also like to include books that relate to. Contributions to our American heritage, you know.
So we're not kicking this around and rewriting this fifteen different times? Can we, can we send this back to the policy?
I don't post anything related to American heritage, or like to take American heritage out of something, and whatever that might. Look like, that would make people upset.
I, I would say that there, there is no intent to exclude. There is only an attempt to include, and the, the idea around policy language and item number two was to be as broad and inclusive.
Well, well, I appreciate that, and I do, at the same time, while we're trying to be inclusive, it's an, it's an optics measure to be inclusive of the. Perspective, excuse me, of the diverse heritage, so we did that, although we've always done that, we're including in a policy. Because of optics and to let everybody know that, come on in, there's also a negative optics viewpoint here when we. Extract American heritage that I'm concerned about.
Why don't we do what Julie recommended, is making it as, uh, maybe make it bullet point five?
Is there an issue with kicking it back to policy committee? Go ahead.
I, 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 I mean, it. I don't know. I mean, I guess you could kick it back for them to write another bullet, but it's.
Or maybe they don't. We don't know.
I, I, it, it's. I guess, I guess my question, I guess it's, it's the fundamental question of why is, why is there an optics of taking American heritage out? Like, why is that a problem? And the, and having an understanding why having it, why does American heritage have to be in there? If we are just talking about having books in the library, and why do you have to be specific about American heritage when we have. A large Ecuadorian population, like, we have lots of large different populations that are here.
Cause ultimately, we're all here to make this country a lot better, this country called America, and I think that should remain a focus.
So then I, so then if you, I, if you kick it back to policy committee, I'd like to see how they write that, because I think. I have a concern, I, I, I would like to see how it's written.
Yeah, and maybe nothing changes, and we get to discuss that. But they've heard us now, so we've heard them, we've heard senior leadership, we kick it back, and they bring us a new recommendation, or they don't, and then we take action on that.
Okay.
But my question is, is there an issue with doing that? Is there some sort of timeline loophole that we're sucked into with this? No? Okay.
There's not?
Is there, is there any thing that on the, um, VSBA that was? I can't remember, was this, is there something on VSBA? It's not Jordan or Julie. It is? Yeah. I mean, does it even have these bullet points at all?
No.
No?
Doesn't. I mean, we.
I mean, maybe, maybe we don't need to start having any of this bullet points, I mean.
But if you, if you don't have the bullet point, right, but just for clarification, if you don't have the bullet points. You will be potentially bringing forward a policy change that eliminate, conceptually eliminates the term American heritage. So you, you would be eliminating it all?
Yeah, you'd be eliminating it all, and you'd be, yeah, yeah, I mean, but I'm just saying, we always go back to the VSBA and.
I, well, I, I, if we're kicking it back to policy, I guess we don't need to continue discussing it, but I would be opposed to it. Deleting all of it because I think number four is important, so that's, that's all I'm gonna say. We haven't even talked about that, so.
So we will, we will revisit it with the policy committee. We, policy committee meets tomorrow morning. We will not revisit it tomorrow morning with policy committee. Cause we'll want some time administratively to kind of look at options, but we'll endeavor to do that in August with the policy committee.
Eight seventeen, IIAC, are they related, and do they both go back?
I. Say again?
I don't think they're related.
I, I don't necessarily either. Um, I think IIAC talks about the, the selection and adoption of, of particular materials and. We are. We are recommending some revisions to IIAC, but I think the more substantive conversation would probably ensue around the regulation. Scenarios that, that we are proposing or will bring forward as a companion piece. Uh, and let me just sort of back up and, and talk about. The idea of a concern around a library book and how we handle a concern around a library book as a, um. How, how we handled it this year and, and maybe the way with this regulation that's attached to the policy, we would handle it moving forward. First and foremost, we, we do have a process in place as a school division for a parent to make a decision that, that their child not check out a book. Uh, there is a, there is a restriction form that is available. It's been available all year. Uh, I can tell you that there was a, a single submission of that form over the course of this year at a school. So we had one submission in terms of a restriction. We have had several library books that have gone through. An appeal process because as a, a group, as, as administration, we made a determination that we were going to consider library books. Within the, the KLB policy. Uh, the KLB policy talks about instructional materials and instructional items. Not dissimilar to curriculum. Upon further review and analysis, I, I think administratively, w- w- we didn't make, um, we, we miscategorize the idea of a library book. And that, to me, was further substantiated with the June memo from the state superintendent around the idea that, that library materials. Are not considered instructional materials. And unless done so at the local level. So pa- part of our suggestion is that in a revision to IIAC. The, the, uh, regulation or companion piece is that a parent who has a concern about a library book. That his or her child would check out would have that conversation with concern. At the school level with the principal and the librarian to determine wh- what was the reason or why is it that that, that I'm concerned about said book? And then the parent has the option to opt their child out of that book or a multitude of books as a result of a family decision. That there wouldn't necessarily be individual library book appeals that occur. We also felt like our librarians and, and our process in making selections for the library materials needed some strengthening. And so over the course of the year, we've looked at how to make that a stronger process. And we believe that within the regulation that we're putting forward, and you see the clean version of that regulation in board docs. That this idea that a librarian making a selection would vet that selection with his or her colleagues within the same level. So they would look at this listing of books that we intend to purchase and talk with other school librarians at their level about that purchase. To see, are there any red flags I'm missing? Are there any things that I'm not thinking of with respect to this book before we make this purchase? We've additionally added language about the school administrator having a responsibility within that process as well. So, so we feel like we've strengthened our process at the school level to make decisions about library materials. And also further clarified that the parent ought to be the driver about what his or her child reads. By further emphasizing this idea that there's the opt-out. That's in a nutshell, the discussion that we had with the committee and what we've talked about administratively.
Thank you, Mr. Keever.
Sure.
Miss Ortega?
So, two things. The superintendent's memo from the state superintendent doesn't, I would, I would argue does not say that library mater- materials are not instructional materials. It says it is not, they're not required to be, but instructional material definitions are made at the local level, which would be this body. So they could be considered instructional materials. And also, the acquisition of, of library books is ongoing. Um, and also, the acquisition of, of library books is ongoing, right, throughout the year?
Correct.
At any given time, a new list of books could appear in a, a library. And that isn't, it, I don't know how, how is a parent supposed to know that? So, are we going to be posting all the, the, the new acquisitions as they come in?
Well, as, as titles are added to the collection, those titles are added to the online repository that parents would have an access to.
Are they highlighted as new acquisitions, or are they just in a?
Let me ask Ms. Barr to come, I'll ask Ms. Barr to come up to answer that question in particular. I, I, I also think that, that question notwithstanding, there are s- specific books that some parents may have a question about or concerns about now based on word of mouth or sharing of information. I would, I would hazard to guess that those, if, if that title were to make it into the collection, that, that parent would already know that they're concerned about said book. But to that point, Ms. Barr, when a new book comes into a collection, how is that handled in terms of cataloging?
Added to the catalog. There isn't a designation as new, and there's not a, a flag or a tag that's on for a certain length of time and then removed at any point in time. They're just added alphabetically within the library, the library catalog.
Generally, also, could you, when we are making selections of library materials, potentially it's ongoing, but are there, are there certain times where it's more pronounced than others?
Yes, there tends to be one larger purchase, um, based on school funds. So, the library, each school a lots of funds for the library books. And there tends to be one larger purchase than as the year goes on when there's need based on contents in their collection, missing books, damaged books, et cetera. They'll make smaller purchases, um, as, on an as-needed basis.
But generally, a?
Generally, it's one large bulk purchase and then smaller within the year.
Ms. Ordigo?
Yeah, that mean that, I mean, yeah, I guess, I guess that we'd have to know what time of, you know, a parent's would have to know what time of year that is. And then it's, it's, the onus is on the parent to review the list every year, or?
I, I would, it, just one more, Dr. Beers, to, um, Ms. Ordigo's observation about the memo and that it is a local decision for local school boards, um, whether or not library materials are considered instructional materials. Our own policy does say that IIBD, um, and this is a portion that was not, um, recommended for removal, says the primary function of a school, schools' library is to support the educational program of the school. I mean, I think that really says it all.
Well, we, we were specific that it, it says educational program and not instructional program.
Can you tell us what the difference is?
I think the instruction program for students is compulsory. And so, there's, it's a teacher delivering instruction in a classroom. It's a set curriculum. We do have a process which, which we do use on a regular basis where a parent can opt a child out of a specific piece of the curriculum. This is, this is a different entity per the memo that we just got and, and from our, from where we stand as administration as well, that this is to support the instructional program. But there are not specific books that have to be used in the instructional program for every single student. So, there is a difference, ones for all and ones by choice. And, and that's where we really believe that parents have a, a very significant role in that choice.
Ms. Donner, you wanted to make a remark? No? Dr. Beers?
Yeah, um, a couple of things. I, there's some categories I don't see anywhere in here. I don't see political, I don't see historical. I, I'm, uh, we're, we're talking about, is that, are these the books we're talking about? That, um, what about all the other books?
Where, where are you looking?
I'm looking at, um, the diverse heritage backgrounds, including religious, ethnic and cultural groups.
So, Dr. Beers.
What about political, what about historical?
We, we've actually moved on.
Sorry?
We've moved on, we're on IIAC. We're on item eight-one-seven, eight dot seventeen.
Well, I missed that. Because I, 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 I'm, I get, I'm just, I get nervous with this kind of discussion when you start talking about categories or authors or, um, and, 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 I, you know, and I know we have a, there, we've got a vocal group that wants to try to, uh, restrict what we put in our libraries and, um, but I, I'm, I, I know political, historical is going to be controversial. Do we have those kind of books in the library?
Yes, sir, we do.
You, okay, so, if I wanted to read about Marx, I could read about Marx? Or if I wanted to compare Marx to, uh, Stalin, I could do that in, in history class?
I, I would assume so, sir. I'm not, I don't know all the titles in our library. But yes, we have a section of, of world history books.
Okay, I'll go on to the next one.
So, let me ask, well, with regards to IIAC, item eight-one-seven, uh, where does the board stand? Ms. Hundley, I haven't heard from you.
Um, I am fine with the, um, policy as written.
As revised?
As revised.
Okay.
Same.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. And I think I know where the Policy Committee is. I think you are in agreement on this. Okay?
Yeah.
Think I know where Dr. Beers is? Ms. Ordigo?
I, I think, I would, I would, can we have this as a standalone on the agenda versus consent agenda?
We absolutely can.
Just, just to?
Have another?
If we have further discussions over the, yeah, just so that we can ask questions if we need to.
And so, that brings us to the end of our policy items for discussion and review. If I can ask, can we place, um, items eight dot zero-one through eight fifteen on a consent agenda? Eight sixteen is going back for review to the Policy Committee. And eight seventeen is going to be an agenda item, an action item. Do we have agreement there? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dow, if I may, just for clarification, a lot of the discussion that we presented tonight is actually in administrative regulations, which is not, for the, the board will not be voting on that. They'll just be voting on the language of the policy.
That's right.
Just to, just for clarity for the community and for the board as well.
Move on to, uh, personnel actions. Can I have a motion on item nine-one to approve the person act, personnel actions as presented this evening?
Mr. Chair, I, um, I recommend that we approve the personal actions as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Donner, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hundley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Dow?
Aye. Item nine-two, if I can have a motion to approve minutes from June twentieth?
Mr. Chair, approve the minutes from the meeting on six-twenty, twenty, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Hundley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Dow?
Aye. And item nine-three, uh, a motion to approve minutes from June twenty-ninth.
Mr. Chair, approve, make a motion to approve the minutes from six-twenty-nine, twenty-three.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley, is there a second for this motion?
Second.
I think that was Ms. Donner.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Hundley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Dow?
Aye. All right, um, is there a motion to approve revisions to policy BDDH slash KD?
Mr. Chair.
Go for it. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I, uh, uh, I make a motion that we approve the revisions to policy BDDH slash KD, KD slash BDDH, public participation at school board meetings.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Aller?
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hundley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dow?
Aye. And can I have a motion for revisions to policy BDTC?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the revisions to policy BDTC, agenda preparation and dissemination as presented.
Second.
Thank you for the second, Ms. Donner. Thank you for the motion, Ms. Ordigo. Any discussion on this item? Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hundley?
Aye.
Mr. Dow?
Aye. And finally, uh, if there's a motion to approve the revisions to our school board standard operating procedures.
Mr. Chairman, I, uh, make, I move that we approve, the board approve the revisions to the school board standard operating procedures, better known as SOP.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. And again, any discussion on this item? Ms. Aller?
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mrs. Donner?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hundley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dow?
Aye. All right, we're going to move on to our board member comments. Uh, Ms. Hummel, I know you hate going first, so I'm going to ask Ms. Young to go first. Surprise.
Yes, thank you.
Surprise.
No, I, I don't have much to say other than, um, sorry, I couldn't hear a lot of you because I had a bad, I'm short, guys, yes. But, um.
I was watching the lightning behind you.
What?
I was watching the lightning behind you. I shouldn't have interrupted you. No, there's no lightning behind you. I'm sorry. Please continue, I'm sorry.
No, but, um, you appreciate all of our work at board, so that's all I have to say, thank you.
Come back to us, okay? Ms. Hummel?
I'm kind of stunned.
Okay, Ms. Hummel?
I just want to thank you guys for letting me, um, participate remotely. And, um, yeah, I have nothing else to say either. So, I, I appreciate all you guys, and we'll see you in person next time.
You two don't log off yet, but do be safe while you're away. Uh, Ms. Donner?
I, I was just wanting to thank the Williamsburg Health Foundation for the wonderful grant that we got for our SHIP programs. Uh, I have the privilege of sitting on that board. And while I had to recuse myself from that vote, uh, the Health Foundation just believes so much in what we're doing, um, to support children and families. And so, you know, funding at a le- at a level higher than what the school division asked for so that we can make sure that we continue to have great quality staff supporting our children. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Dr. Beers?
Uh, I don't think I have any comments.
Ms. Hundley?
Um, yes, uh, hopefully, somebody will invite me to see the summer scholars or summer school programs. And I know we'll be at Lafayette graduation, so I'm looking forward to that. Um, I do, um, want to say that, um, just, I feel like this is the closing out of the year, July, um, how much I appreciate, um, everybody that is in the room. Um, the gratitude, um, message that we started off with in the beginning of the year was very motivating. Dr. Heron, and no pressure there for what you're going to come up with for this next school year. But, um, I know some of us received five cards, and I know I used all five of mine up in one month, uh, letting people know how grateful I was. And, um, I like that the students at graduation reflect on their year. And I reflect back to, we're all here, we're all standing. And, um, so, I found some gratitude cards. And my two favorite candies, I just wanted to give each of you, um, everybody that has supported students in our division, um, that some, these candies are sweet, sour, and there's this fizz in there for an element of surprise, just in case, to give you a heads up. But I kind of feel like that's what our year has been like. We've had some very sweet times, we've had some sour times. But even in the surprises, we've grown. And, um, so, uh, I just, if you want to trade your cards, you can use them as trading cards. If you don't like your message and you want to trade with someone else, mine says, "There is calmness to a life lived in gratitude and quiet joy." So, if anyone wants to, uh, trade with me, or you don't like yours, fine, um, trade with someone else or keep it. But I just wanted to say how much I appreciate and how grateful I am to serve on this board and how, um, I want the public to know that we do have children's best interests at heart at all times. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hundley. Ms. Ordigo?
Yeah, I just, I don't have a whole lot to say. I just appreciate all the hard work that the staff continues to do through the summer. Um, I know it's, thank you for dealing with all of our many questions in meetings and outside of meetings. And, um, it's, it's important that we ask the questions and, and we're grateful for them and the answers. And, uh, I think the best sign of my gratitude to staff would be to stop talking, so.
Stole the words right from me. I am, for myself, I am not going to offer too much, but, uh, extending the thanks as well uh, to Dr. Heron and your team, uh, present and those, uh, hopefully not still watching at home. But, uh, thank you to everybody for, it has been a fantastic year. August is around the corner, end of August, we're going to start up again. And it's going to be another fantastic, um, opportunity to serve children, serve their, uh, their families. And I know that, um, I know we're going to be ready for the task and the challenge, the opportunity.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Campimanchan, there will be an opportunity for the board. We're just establishing a time, the foundation board, and, and you will be invited to come and see the, the end result of, of Campimanchan, and we're looking forward to that. So, expect it on your calendar soon. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Um, upcoming events. Uh, Policy Committee is meeting on June, excuse me, tomorrow, July twelfth, July twelfth, uh, virtually at eight-thirty AM. And then the summer school graduation ceremony, July twenty-seventh at three PM at the Lafayette High School. Can't wait to be there and, uh, encourage and recognize those, those graduates.
Absolutely.
Upcoming meetings, uh, closed session followed by work session and action items on August first. Uh, closed session beginning at three-thirty, uh, here in room three hundred at Central Office, NX. And then on August fifteenth, closed session at five PM again here. And then regular meeting at six-thirty at the, uh, middle school gymnasium. I think that covers it. Our cons, our consent agenda is planned for the fifteenth? Or we're going to have that on the first?
First.
The first, okay, all right. This meeting's adjourned, thank you.